Okay, we have five minutes after six now. Hello? Go ahead and we'll get started here. Yeah, we were supposed to start at six o'clock. It's already five after six. I'm going to ask the mayor to please make some opening remarks and then we'll go on with the public hearing segment. So, Mayor, maybe if you can just raise up one of the mics there and then speak and, yeah, just welcome our folks that are here tonight.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Senator Tamara, former congressman, I'm Congressman. Welcome, everyone, our stakeholders, our residents of Baragada. Of course, we thank you for coming out tonight so we can better understand what is going on in our Tijan area and with that, with the University of Guam. And most of all, with your presence, it will help us to understand and what is the consensus tonight. And thank you again. And I know I've heard this and I hope that you can also give your testimonials at the end or during the tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Blas, and thank you also for the refreshments that you provided and for the accommodation here tonight. So, we'll go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order. The Committee on Environmental Land Agriculture and Procurement Reform calls this public hearing to order. It is now six minutes after six on Tuesday, February 28, 2017. Present with me tonight is Vice Speaker Thariq Terlahi, and I know that several other senators said they were going to be coming to join us tonight. I want to emphasize that we're going to be discussing tonight Bills 13-34 and Bill 18-34, but I'm going to take it out of order because I think Bill 18 is going to be the shorter one. And Bill 18 is an act to transfer a portion of lot number, and it's basically right as shown up here. It is an act to transfer a portion of Lot 54, a portion of this lot here down at Fadian from the Chamorro Land Trust inventory to the University of Guam for the expansion of the Guam Agricultural Development and Training Center, which is located in this lot here. So, they're basically needing additional space to expand their operation. And so, at this time, what we'll do is, before I do that, let me just go through a couple more boilerplate stuff here. This public hearing tonight, notice was given to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on February 20th and on February 24th, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. So, we'll now start with the hearing on Bill 18-34. And signing up to provide testimony is Dr. Robert Underwood from the President of the University of Guam and Mr. Michael Bora, the Director of the Department of Land Management and Executive Director for the Chamorro Land Trust. So, if I could invite those two gentlemen forward to join us. And also joining us is Senator Telina Nelson. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. So, I'm going to go ahead and start first with Director Borja.
Good evening, Vice Speaker Terlahi, Chairman Ada, and Senator Nelson. My name is Mike Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management and the Administrative Director of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. This testimony is on Bill Number 18-34, which intends to transfer land from the inventory of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission to the University of Guam's Guam Aquaculture and Development Training Center for compensation due to expansion needs of the facility. Based on the intent of this bill and the attached survey sketch and aerial map, the Department of Land Management has the following comments. On the land transfer, the CLTC Board of Commissioners will address this bill at their March 9, 2017 meeting. Based on previous transfers of land from CLTC inventory, the following conditions have applied. The land transfer shall be compensated at the fair market value. The land recipient shall bear all costs of land appraisals, land surveys, and land registration if that's required, and payment method of the land shall be negotiated. Two, based on the survey sketch, 100 FY 2017, which we recently supplied to the committee, a recently finished sketch, it's not an approved survey map yet. The existing facility exists on Lot 25-17 and occupies approximately 21,443 square meters, or about 5.3 acres, and they're requiring an additional 6,395 square meters, or another 1.6 acres, from Lot 5412- R11. Based on the survey map, I mean, sorry, the survey sketch and the attached aerial, which I have shown up here, this facility appears to be encroaching on Lot 5412, and based on Google Earth imagery, this facility has encroached since prior to 2010. Now, based on what Dr. Underwood has spoken to me about, but I've written that the facility, if it includes a commercial activity, the encroachment should be compensated for the period of the encroachment, and a more accurate determination of the construction of the buildings which are encroaching should be determined. Thank you for allowing me to provide this testimony.
Thank you. So, basically, we're talking about this area here where the...
The existing facility is...
The existing facility is, and they're needing just a little bit of this property over here to expand into.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
All right. Dr. Underwood?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Ada, Vice Speaker Terlahi, Senator Nelson. Thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the University of Guam, we want to thank you for addressing the boundary issue through Bill Number 1834 regarding the appropriate boundary for the Guam Aquaculture Development and Training Center, more commonly known as the Hatchery. Our research has brought new light to the issue, which we wish to share with you tonight. The University of Guam has operated the Hatchery for a number of years since approximately 2001. We have not been able to take full advantage of the opportunities the Hatchery affords. A significant factor in the lack of progress has been the lack of investment into the infrastructure on the property. The university believes that a public-private partnership is the appropriate solution for the Hatchery. Under the plan devised by the University, a private entity would invest several million dollars into the property. The private entity would be allowed to earn a profit for the sale of pathogen-free shrimp, for which the university holds patents, and an educational component would be included to incorporate teaching, research, and learning activities into the operation of the Hatchery and promote aquaculture in general. As the university was developing a request for proposal for this proposed partnership, a problem with the boundary came to light. After conducting a survey for the RFP, it was discovered that some of the existing structures, as indicated by Mr. Borja, are not within the existing boundaries of the Hatchery. The university would not be able to enter into any kind of lease and attract investment if the university did not own clear title to the property, which the 1.6 acres is in question. With limited records available to us, and actually, we kind of finally found the last piece of it today, we've been able to cobble together a history of the land as best as we could. Based on our research, we've been able to confirm that the property line, as indicated there, between the Chamorro Land Trust and the Fadian Hatchery, has been in existence since it was included in a 1952 map filed with the Department of Land Management. At that time, the land on which the Hatchery is located belonged to Henry T. and Margarita T. Flores. The boundary was the line of demarcation between the private property of the Flores family and the property owned by the government of Guam, Lot Number 5412. Based on discussions with the Perez family, we learned that the property in question had been purchased by the Perez family from the Flores family. And the Perez family began to develop the property with a private investor in the 1970s for use as a fish hatchery. After a few unsuccessful attempts to make the Hatchery profitable, it was turned over to the Department of Commerce in 1985, so it became part of the government of Guam in 1985. The Department of Commerce ran the Hatchery for 16 to 17 years before it was transferred to the University in Public Law 2635 and an administrative provision of an long-budget law, which moved ownership of the assets of the Hatchery to UOG, and then subsequently, Public Law 2676, which transferred the employees of the Hatchery and eliminated the Department of Commerce and reorganized its functions. We've tried to discern when the structures that are currently located on Chamorro Land Trust property were put in place. On the map attached to the property transfer from the Perez family to the Department of Commerce, there was a Butler Building which crossed the boundary, which no longer exists. Then, what happened is we believe that the Department of Commerce then went ahead and built other structures there, including the cistern, which encroached into it, but since it was all government of Guam, nobody, and this preexisted Chamorro Land Trust, nobody thought anything of it. So, we believe that this was the case. But then, subsequently, Public Law 2635, which was passed in 2001, read, "Administrative and operational control," after the Department of Commerce was slated for disbanding, it was disbanded, "control of the GADTC, which consists of an indoor hatchery, broodstock maturation room, phytoplankton laboratory, freed preparation room, living quarters, offices, concrete ponds, and raceways, tanks, property, land, and other facilities shall be transferred from the Department of Commerce to the University of Guam." So, this transferred all of the Hatchery to the University of Guam, including the cistern that's on the 1.6 acres. And so, our original intent was to just simply kind of codify that. We're, of course, eager to work with the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and so we'll be happy to work with them in any fashion. And you may want to consider how you want to proceed with this legislation based on this information. This is not an attempt to kind of evade the conditions that Mr. Borja has outlined. We have fully intended, and, you know, we have a slight amendment to your legislation, if you propose, and that is that the total square meters shall be transferred, shall be mutually agreed upon by CLTC and UOG. UOG shall negotiate with CLTC for the compensation value of the portion of Lot Number 5412 to be transferred, which may be based on fair market value, negotiations for the total area compensation value in terms of sales subcomit within 30 days from enactment, and be completed within 120 days from enactment. So, we're also assuming that since this property is landlocked and the access to it is severely limited, because if you allowed access to it, it would destroy the whole pathogen-free nature of the Hatchery. That's why nobody can just decide to go there and take a tour. You have to, you know, it's a pathogen-free area. That's what makes it valuable. So, assuming, and, you know, I would propose that we use the Public Law 26 that transferred it as a guide to inform our conversation on this, and if, you know, if there's still a desire to work with the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and follow the kind of provisions they've been following, we would be content with that as well. But we think that probably closer reading of the actual legal history will show that the whole thing was presumably transferred to the University of Guam 17 years ago.
All right. Well, we'll certainly take into consideration the information that you've provided. Mr. Borja, you indicated that the commission will not be taking this matter up until March 9th, so we'll hold back from reporting out the bill until you've had a chance to deliberate on it. And I believe the legislature might have a session at the end of March, and that's when we will report it out. Okay? All right. Senator, Vice Speaker, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Underwood, could you just tell us, I see three buildings sketched on the survey that the Director has provided. Can you tell us what those three buildings are? Are they concrete or...?
Yes, some are cisterns.
What is a cistern, I'm sorry?
It holds water for the Hatchery. And then, there were, you know, some kind of buildings that, you know, held experiments, but they were kind of destroyed by a couple of typhoons in the interim. But they are an integral part of the whole Hatchery, the whole Hatchery complex.
They're being used?
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, we're still conducting experiments there. We've hired, we have a faculty researcher there, and the government of Guam still gives an annual appropriation of 169,000, I believe, for the operation of the Hatchery.
Do you plan to build more buildings?
No, we plan to clarify the property lines and then enter into a private-public partnership with an investor who may want to build more buildings, but we need more buildings. We need bigger facilities and more expensive facilities, but we're not able to afford that.
All right. I was going to ask Mr. Borja, if the Chamorro Land Trust, then they have not decided on this yet? They have not discussed this?
No, ma'am, it hasn't been brought up yet. It'll be on the agenda for March 9th.
March 9th, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This property that you are looking to acquire at fair market value, has there been a survey done for the fair market value cost yet?
No, but, you know, just discussing it with people who are knowledgeable in real estate, because it's landlocked, you know, the presumed fair market value would be probably 50% of what it would normally have, but we don't know. But the issue really is, was it the intention of the legislature back in 2001 to transfer the whole property? Now, I just read the provision. It seems like it transferred the whole property. And the encroachment, what is now labeled an encroachment, was actually done by the Department of Commerce, and since it was all government of Guam at the time, and it predated the implementation of the Chamorro Land Trust Act, it didn't seem like they needed to codify that in any way. So, the only time that there was actual mention of the property was when it was transferred in an administrative provision of a budget law, which that meant it was kind of hidden from a lot of people because it's not in the normal GCA.
And to, just to make sure that I'm clear on this, this land is going to be used to start a Hatchery?
No, we have a Hatchery. It's to get investment so that we can develop a more robust Hatchery, so that the brood stock can be sold commercially.
So, you have to go out and get a loan for the land?
Well, we hope to get an investor to do it. That's the whole idea.
But not like a bond or a loan for that?
No, no, no.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think I don't want to put the government in more debt.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, unless you have any...
I won't get any more allotments.
Unless you have any further comments to make.
One of the other things, based on the discussions and the testimony from Dr. Underwood, is because this facility is a sterile facility, I would propose then that there be probably a 30-foot buffer zone around the Chamorro Land Trust edge of the property, just to ensure there's no encroachment or infraction into this area, just to protect its sterile nature.
And I would leave that for Chamorro Land Trust and the university to work out the details of that. The bill simply just authorizes that transfer of property. The details, you guys will have to work out.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Sure, Senator.
Mr. Borja, thank you, Mr. Chair. You said a 30-foot buffer zone? Would that be, the buffer zone, is that specifically around areas of Chamorro Land Trust, or would it also be around, I guess, locally-owned or residential-owned property?
Well, for example, in the recent enactment of a public law that allowed for the Hutten Amad Chamorro facility just up the coast, we internally created a 10-to-15-foot buffer zone around the interior edge of that property, again, just to ensure that we have the area to, if we wanted to cordon it off or to just prevent any kind of encroachments from entering into a facility that might contaminate it from, you know...
See, and just to add more information to that, that area here is pretty much inaccessible because it's a really high cliff there, so nobody could get there anyways without kind of going through the access through the Hatchery. So, what Mr. Borja is suggesting is an excellent idea, but it's also facilitated by the topography of the area, because you can't get there. You have a hard time getting there from any other way.
A buffer zone is like an easement, and it just prevents any future expansion or use of that area.
And you're going to add in another 15 feet?
Well, we have to look at it. I'm suggesting 30, just to make sure there's enough space to keep it clear.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Borja, does that mean you want to give them more than the 1.6 acres?
No, we can probably buffer zone on our end.
Oh, you're going to buffer your own land?
We'll buffer it so that we don't have any reason to, if there's a reason to use it in the future, we prevent it going into that buffer zone area. So, we would create a buffer zone, for example, just as an easement, just to keep from us drawing it out as a lot and leasing it out for whatever reason in the future, just to protect it in the future.
But don't you need it? I mean, they should be able to take care of their own buffer zone, I would think. That's their industry, right? And the other thing I noticed is that they said it's landlocked, that makes it valuable for the Hatchery. It keeps the Hatchery sterile, I guess? But yet, if the fair market value would only be half of the value, and the department is okay with that?
Well, I, no, I...
That's just conversations I've had with...
Realtors.
With Realtors, you know. They're the ones that are saying that because it's landlocked and it's not accessible, the fair market value would be likely 50% of what it normally would be. It's not a negotiating point, it's just information, that's all.
The appraisals will make that determination, but based on public documents on the tax-assessed value of the existing facility, we saw it at $41 a square meter.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Okay, now you can have fun for the rest of the night.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is Bill Number 13-34, which was introduced by myself and Senator Spaldon. And it's an act to rezone approximately 250 acres of property that was returned to Gov. Guam by the military in NAS. And that's this area here. This here is Mariner Avenue. Mr. Borja, you want to go ahead and, here you go. I'm going to go ahead and have Mr. Borja, who's Chief of Staff in my office, and have him explain basically what we've got here and what we're doing with Bill 13-34.
We've got two displays up here. The static display over here shows the area that's going to be a rezone, proposing the bill, and it's basically, this is Route 8 coming from Agatnia. It's basically north of Route 8, and then west of Route 16. And then, the white lines indicate two proposed roads. One is Mariner Avenue, and the other one is Morsir Avenue. Properties to be rezoned are private properties below to the south of Mariner Avenue. There are some property owners here that have come up. The properties are north of Mariner Avenue, and the public hearing, I guess, will address those issues. There are, when Tijan was returned, South Tijan, there were five parcels that were kept by the military originally. One parcel is the homeless parcel, it's about a two-acre portion here. Another parcel, south of Mariner, is an airport parcel that is presently being leased out by Guahan Academy. And then, the other parcel is the recreational parcel.
This is better.
And one is the recreational parcel that includes the baseball field, softball field, the gym, football field, and includes the area that's being used by the liberation activities. There's a big building in there used for liberation activities. So, the private properties are generally in this area, and they comprise of two parcels, which in the original NAS Agania reuse plan, those were designated as economic development zones. And like I said, this is one area here, and then this is the other area here. The recreational parcel is under DPR, and the homeless parcel is under Gura, representing the homeless coalition here that we have. And then, of course, we have Tijan High and the Guahan Academy. The area does not include the post office here, and, of course, there's a pipeline running through the south of the areas to be zoned.
So, Bill 13-34, the basic intent was that it has been now, in 1990, the Base Closure Act was passed. It took 10 years to then transfer the property from the military to Gov. Guam, and then it took, I believe, about another three years from that time to finally get it to the Ancestral Lands Commission, before then they started giving back the properties to the original landowners. And so, what Bill 13 is doing, oh, and after the landowners got their properties back, many of them are stuck in probate court trying to untangle or resolve the distribution issues. And so, what Bill 13 is doing is basically recognizing the fact that when the federal government returned these properties back, that the intended use was for industrial and business activities, which would basically require an M1 zoning. So, Bill 13 proposes to facilitate the rezoning of these properties to M1. And, of course, if any landowner doesn't want their property rezoned at this time to M1 because of the tax implications, then the bill makes provisions for that landowner to come in and say, "Nope, just leave it as agricultural zone," or otherwise, you'll get rezoned to industrial. And all it does is it accelerates the rezoning of this property, and it avoids clogging up the Guam Land Use Commission with 40 different landowners, or at least, I don't know how many landowners now, since probably a lot of it's gotten parceled out, clogging up the Land Use Commission coming in asking for a, applying for a rezoning. So, that's what... So that's what Bill 13-34 does. Up here is a more detailed breakout of the property showing the lot numbers. And so for many, I know recently, I believe Jim Atkins recently got his property rezoned down here to M1. I know that we have some properties, we said that the delineation was Mariner Avenue, and Mariner Avenue, actually, the military way back had already began planning to extend Mariner Avenue to connect to Route 16. So we got some properties where part of it is down here within, south of Mariner Avenue, but actually extends, I believe it's here, it extends north of Mariner Avenue. So we're going to need to, we're going to need to adjust the language so that it allows for property that, portions of the property that lie north of Mariner Avenue to also be included in that. But before I go any further, let me go ahead and ask Mr. Borja to come up and give his testimony from, on behalf of the Department of Land Management, and then also signing up to provide oral testimony is Mr. John Camacho. And I don't, there's other people that have signed up but did not check off if you wanted to give oral testimony. So if you do want to give oral testimony, you can come up after we've dismissed these two individuals. Okay, Mr. Borja?
Again, good evening. My name is Michael Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management. On Bill Number 13-34, it intends to rezone lands south of Tijan that were formerly federal excess lands and transferred to their ancestral owners, and to rezone it to light industrial or M1. As described, these properties are located in the boundaries of Mariner Street, Routes 8 and 16, expanding all the way from the Guam Postal Facility and terminating along near the Baragada entrance into Tijan. Certain properties in the inventory remain vacant, however, they're both of a variety of land uses to include warehousing for various industries, the Tijan High School and other government operations to include multi-sport facility uses under the control of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Likewise, certain law enforcement agencies in the Guam Public School System are headquartered within this area of concern. Under an M1 designation, all use is permitted in the zoning code for agricultural, residential, and commercial use that can occur with restrictions limited to structural and/or operational permits, such as a building code requirement and business permits respectively. With respect to public facilities such as Tijan High School or multi-sport field facility, no use requirement exists to mitigate noise, smell, or otherwise those activities accustomed to producing obnoxious effect to human senses. The recent passage of Public Law 33228 rezoned Lot 2168 from agricultural to M1. Lot 2168 identified in this bill's, isn't, is identified in this bill's inventory of properties. In our report to the Committee on Land, we requested that the bill be modified to recognize existing zoning designations and use surrounding property to express a more consistent logical distribution of zoning boundaries in an effort to encourage consistent development and build out throughout, and build out with the existing development overlays. Further details in the Department of Land Management's assessment of this proposed zone are included in the Land Zone Consideration Report, which I attached to my testimony. I also listed in my testimony some language of the bill that we recommend to have changed. One of them is to change the requirement of notification from registered mail to certified mail. Registered mails primarily used for sending valuable items. Certified mail will do just fine, and it's cheaper. Section 2E in updating the master zone and other references. We wanted to change the days of the enactment of this, and a lot of it is just to allow for more time on our part, too. As you go further down into the timing, it, you talk about in the beginning of the bill that everything is in working days, and then we get further into the language, we, you drop the working days and just mention straight days, and it tends to close the gap significantly on responses. And so doing things like changing the mapping and all that does have some, it shortens the time effect even to recording. So we suggested changing the days in our, in my testimony to, for the reaction and the action that's necessary. Since there are still lots that have not yet been surveyed since the transfer of the title to the estate of the ancestral owner, the timing to accomplish the actions necessary in this legislation may not be adequate. Should the Department of Land Management find the need for additional time to accomplish the notifications and for the landowner to fulfill their necessary functions, the department may address the need to extend the period through additional legislation if we do have to come to that. And in light of the recently enacted 33-228, which rezoned a set of properties, the Department of Land Management supported that legislation and supports Bill 13-34 with the comments mentioned in this testimony and in our Land Zone Consideration Report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Borja. Before I, before I get to you, Mr. Camacho. Available out there is a one-page fact sheet, and so if, please make sure you get a copy of that. Also, a copy of the bill is available out there, and if you have any particular questions on that, please raise them at this public hearing and we'll address them. Okay, Mr. Camacho?
Good day, Senator Primuan Bama. Vice Speaker Terista Vare, Nancy Grina, Selena Nelson. I appear before you tonight in support of Bill 13-34 with a few exceptions. The first exception is that it wantonly and unilaterally zones all the parcels, including the ones that are close to Route 8 and Route 16. And the actual thought process here, in fact, that Selena's grandfather, many, many years ago, made a zone on the other side of the street, all the way from Route 8 all the way up past Baragada Heights, 100 feet from the travel portion or from the right-of-way in would be commercial. And so what you're doing here as far as putting in at M1 all the way up to the highway would be to create another Harmon Industrial Park. And I don't know that we want to do that in a well-traveled portion of Guam's highway, you know? That's the first issue. The second issue is that obviously that there's no R1 or R2 in the area because the covenants and the restrictions that brought it back to Guam clearly stated it. The contamination in that area of petroleum products and chloridine and lead-based paint and the like is rampant in that area, so there is a restriction. So M1 makes sense, commercial makes sense. There has been spot zoning in the area, the 0911 area was spot zoned, and of course, the Jim Atkins property was also spot zoned. So, you know, it's already been precedents. And when you guys or the previous legislatures approached and rezoned the Harmon Cliff Line, they put multiuses in all that area. And of course, you know, the Tijan Reuse Commission and the actual use of this property was very, very controlled by the Navy because of the airport. It should be treated the same way as the Harmon Cliff Line was treated, where it went from H to R1, R2, industrial and commercial. And that makes sense. So I do have a few restrictions in that regard. Also, you know, the default zoning, which is agricultural, and I'm glad you're doing this, Senator, because the default zoning of agriculture for the whole area just don't make sense. If you take a look at some of the other pieces, case in point, the Tijan Highway, if you take a look of it, there's derelict homes, there's junkyards, there's uses that are basically just in violation of the whole intent and purpose of that agricultural zoning. And the reason why is because people, sure, there may be, this is maybe the third or fourth layer of ownership in this property, where Tatantatan Tanbiu used to own it 100 years ago. Now there's people that have moved off island that don't even know that they have an affinity to Guam until they started learning that they got some valuable properties in Guam that were returned back from the Navy, and they own maybe 1/1,000ths of that estate, wherever that may be, you know? And the reason why I know that is because I was the first chairman of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. And, you know, I just, a comment of yours just struck me a few minutes ago, as far as you saying that some of these properties were not given back by the Ancestral Lands Commission for 10 years. These properties, all, including Harmon Cliff Line, this area, Radio Baragada, all over Guam, were given back under the former Congressman Primuan Robert Underwood, under 103339, gave back about 3,200 acres, and, including NAS Agania. And some of these properties, people have used or have owned it for 10 years. We don't have to pay the income tax, or if we do, it's very small because it's zone agricultural, so, you know, it's pennies on the dollar, we don't have to worry about that. Some of them had to, you know, we, they had to go out and get surveys to establish their boundaries and establish their ownerships. But a lot of it has been just fallen fallow, idle, because, you know, they try to sell, market's very depressed at an agricultural piece of property. There's a lot of questions within the area, how can we rezone it? How can we make, you know, the buyer or the actual owners have really a lot of questions about how to develop this area? So that bill that you're doing, Bill 13, is very, very noble and very, the intent is clear, you know, we want to make it economically, to make an economic development. So it's good, but, you know, please take into consideration, you know, again, the affinities to highways, and also, don't forget that, you know, Tijan is, this is only part of Tijan. There's North Tijan, there's East Tijan, and then there's West Tijan, you know? A lot of it's owned by the airport, but also in West Tijan, you know, that was, and that's already evident by the coming in of the highway, the Tijan Parkway, that there are areas there that are in residential, and people are actually living there, making their living in that area. So, you know, again, you know, please take that all into consideration when you guys, you know, put this bill into its finality, and I'm sure that there's going to be other public hearings that, you know, people will probably be bringing this to light. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Zuzzus Masi. Thank you, Zuzzus Masi. Well, first of all, I want to point out that the bill deals only with this particular area of Tijan, because there's a specific land deed that basically gives back this parcel. So that's why we're not dealing with Tijan property on the north side of the runway. And so we're limiting our efforts basically to here, based on a certain land deed that gave back these parcels over here. In terms of the zoning that you've indicated, I believe the, the, there is an existing law, and that will still, of course, be adhered to in terms of the properties out here. There's a requirement, I believe it's, we can only zone up to commercial. Do you want to explain that?
No, it's, what it basically does is, is it allows 200 feet of center line of these highways to be, for the owners to have the option to convert to commercial.
Right, but, 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 but the, the, the M1 portion is then, that's where the M1 portion begins, right? From where the...
Well, in that Public Law 33-228 for the Atkins property, we did not give that consideration. We mentioned that in our testimony of the preference to have the properties that are along the highway to be commercial, and beyond that, it can be M1, but the way the law was written or enacted, it's all going to be M1.
Okay.
I'm sure we'd hate to see barracks, you know, close to Route 8 or Route 16, you know? Because that's not allowed use within the M1 zone.
If a landowner wanted to build, let's say, workers' barracks somewhere, they would have to go through the Land Use Commission first, right?
They'd need a variance.
They need a variance.
And they'll have to go through the Land Use Commission first.
Correct, correct. But M1 is really one of the less restrictive zoning that you can get. M2 is really the most, least restrictive, but in M1, you can do things even like an automobile repair shop, a painting shop, you know, for cars, and that was the kind of examples I gave in my previous testimony for the other bill, that we would prefer to have that kind of activity away from the highway, and especially if across the street there's still a significant amount of residential.
I don't know if everybody, have you had a chance to read the bill?
Yes.
You have, okay. And I just, maybe I should go ahead and just go over briefly some of the, some of the points in the bill. On page three, it lists the properties, these lots here, these are the basic lots, and it lists the lots that then will be eligible for rezoning to M1. And then it requires, the bill requires land management to send out notices to the last known registered owners to inform them about the bill and the rezoning to an M1. And that's important because there's tax implications. If you rezone from agriculture, obviously, the land tax goes up if you rezone it to M1. So some, some, some property owners may want to just keep it at agriculture, and when they feel that they're ready, then they can come in and go through the normal process. The bill requires that if the landowner wants their property rezoned to M1, they have to affirm that. We can't just assume that because you didn't say no, you meant yes. So we're gonna, we're gonna need to, basically, within so many days of enactment, the owners of the lots or their duly authorized representatives must provide written affirmation to the Director of the Department of Land Management. And then failure to affirm or non-concurrents will basically then not touch the zoning on that property. It would basically leave it as agriculture, or if it was previously rezoned, then it won't touch that at all. There is a rezoning fee that will be, that will be assessed, the amount of $640, and that's the amount that will basically... amount of $640, and that's the amount that will basically, um, approximately cover the cost that Department of Land Management will incur in basically getting the administrative matters taken care of. And that's really the gist of the bill itself. So there are timelines, uh, that DPW, that land management needs to adhere to, and so far sending out notices, there's timelines for the landowners, uh, for them to step forward and whatnot. Uh, we're gonna need to just take a, a quick one-minute break so that they can change the tape, um, and so we'll just, uh, recess here for about a minute. All right, we're back in session. Um, so if you don't have any more, uh...
Just answer a question.
Sure.
Is this on?
It's on.
It's on? Uh, if somebody, uh, falls outside this zone, for example, right on, uh, the Parkway, and if you go, go through the Parkway today, you'll see a whole bunch of derelict homes, uh, abandoned homes, and then you see people working on diesel trucks, you'll see other activities in that area other than, uh, residential. Could they come to you and say, okay, you know, we are part of this area, could we avail ourselves of something commercial or residential or something, you know, so that in one fell swoop, you can take care of all the problems in Tizen? Because invariably it's going to haunt you and it's going to surface again, uh, in the near future where people will say, well, I either bought this piece of property or it belonged to my grandfather, I'd like to, uh, realize the highest and best use, can you help me?
And the answer to your question is no. Uh, because the, the, uh, this area that we're dealing with here, uh, deals with a specific deed, uh, from the federal government to the Gov Guam, uh, designating, returning this property with the intended, with the intention that it will be used for industrial. It, it does, it does, this bill does not, nor the deed that we're working with, does not, uh, deal with anything north of Mariner. Uh, but like I said, we, we will have to, um, to look at the language of the bill to include, for example, property that's down here, where just part of it falls south of Mariner Avenue and another portion of it, uh, fall, goes, falls north. So this is really the area, only this area that we're, that the bill addresses. Now, to your question, if they come and they say, well, can we rezone this? That is something that they probably would need, well, they will need to go through the Guam Land Use Commission. I, I normally don't, well, unless they can find somebody who can introduce, uh, special legislation to rezone that.
Well, one more thing, Senator, you know, under, uh, the reuse, uh, plan of Gov Guam that was given to, back to the Navy, uh, uh, many years ago...
1995.
Uh, that plan encompass all of Tizen, you know, not only this area, but also other areas of Tizen.
Right.
And, uh, I think if we would revisit that, I haven't seen that thing, I think Joe would probably be more knowledgeable of that, if we would revisit that, and maybe we, you know, that will open the, uh, the, uh, the secrets of what the, the government of Guam planned for the rest of the areas.
Okay, we, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, uh, so, sorry, Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, is, is there anything, Mr. Borja, that would prevent, um, rezoning the rest of Tizen?
The area that was spoken about earlier is the, the phase two of the Tizen Parkway. Almost all those properties have already been acquired or are under acquisition for the continuation of the Tizen Parkway to go and connect down to Route 10A or known as the Airport Road.
Wait, the property that who's referring to? This bill?
No, 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 Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, well, the other properties, yeah, that are still privately owned...
The only other ones that are still privately owned are the areas known as the officer housing.
Mm-hmm.
And that one, um, I know that there was some legislation in the last term that was trying to, to do some, um, re-zoning as well. We had some issue, we, we had some particulars about what parts could, should be, should remain as residential and what parts could potentially be commercial.
So you are of the opinion that part of Tizen should remain residential?
Well, we go on historical uses and the housing area along the cliffline is a historical use of that property and to retain the remainder of that property that is currently housing as a residential, whether R1 or R2. And then the empty areas that lead out into the, into Route 8, that new opening, that's commercial prop, I mean, that's, was not zoned either and it's currently not under use, but it's, it had no other particular uses. It's, you know, and it may fall within certain restrictions that the airport may govern as well, just because of the proximity.
But the GLUC, if the private property owners applied for a rezon, they don't rely on, um, historical use, do they? I mean, is that something that came from GLUC as to how they're going to use these, or their...
Well, this was, this was our discussion during, during proposed legislation hearing, a hearing for proposed legislation.
It, it just seems counter to the, the reason why we're going to allow all of this property to become M1, that we still want to maintain parts of Tizen as residential.
Well, no, if you look at my land zone consideration report, we'll discuss in there, that there are certain particulars that have to be of concern in an M1.
Yes, what are those?
You have schools.
Yes.
You have a school in there, you have some other, other government facilities that are in here, and to put the M1 condition on surrounding, um, lots could pose an issue because there's, you know, again, we mentioned is obnoxious, um, materials to the senses, smell, hearing, sight, uh, those kinds of things are the, the, the reasons you would restrict an industrial zone to particular areas, for example. Now, all of the airport is an M2, you know, the, the flight line, because it falls under the conditions of what an, an M2 would be. There's obnoxious gases and noises coming from that place.
So, but the bill before us does say all of it will become M1 regardless of its proximity to the schools or the recreational areas, right? Right now, that's how the bill reads?
Correct.
Is there, uh, and your concern is that M1 perhaps should not be adjacent to the highway, should be commercial adjacent to the highway, M1 further in or away from highways? And what about, um, oh, uh, so, the GLUC, what have, they've received dine applications to rezon these properties?
There are a couple, but it hasn't gone through the, the complete, it's not complete yet.
Yeah, I'm, I was curious to know what their concerns were. What about the Atkins property? Did it go through GLUC for a time? Not at all?
No, it was legislative.
I know it was, in the end, legislative, I'm wondering if in the beginning...
No.
It went to GLUC. So GLUC has really not made any, um, policy in this area?
No decisions have been made yet on the applications that were submitted.
Do you think there's, um, re, there's any reason that GLUC would delay considering the two applications that are before?
No, there's a time period that's required. There's notification period, notification of all the surrounding owners, there's, there's notices that have to be placed, and then there's, there's, um, setting it up on the agenda, but there's reviews by the Application Review Committee that, that it has to undergo. All those are the different, all those are the steps when an application is submitted to the Land Use Commission. Through the legislation process, there isn't really an Application Review Committee, um, review. And the Application Review, uh, Application Review Committee is made up of all the regulatory agencies within the government, the utilities, EPA, you know, Public Works, all those guys. They all look at these kinds of things to make a determination whether or not there might be issues with, with, uh, historical areas, um, other kinds of uses, water, water, um, needs and things like that.
So just to be clear, your report does not include that review, that...
No, it does not.
Okay, it's a different type of report.
Well, the land zone consideration report is sort of a, a summary review of an abbreviated version of what would normally happen in a, uh, and again, even that is, the time period required is extremely abbreviated, so it doesn't give enough time for, you know, real ample review from the Application Review Committee.
Okay, and then, is this list that's attached to your testimony says contact listing surrounding property owners? Are these the property owners of these...
You take a 500-foot radius of the affected property or properties and you determine who those residents are, and then you make up a list and those are the people we would normally have to send out a certified letter to.
Okay, so some of these on this list include those who are in, uh, adjacent areas, not in the property to be rezoned?
In the village of Barigada.
Okay. But the people whose property are being rezoned are, are also on this list, that's correct?
It would be, yes, but we'd be notifying them anyway because they're the actual affected property.
Okay.
Can I make another, just one last comment?
Yes.
You know, last legislature, uh, Western Tizen, uh, there was an application or a, a bill come through, uh, to rezone Lot 2057, uh, and that was going to be commercial, uh, all the way out to the cliffline. So can you imagine a Kmart in that area, you know? So anyway, you know, that, that's, you'll never be able to stop people from coming to you and begging and appealing to you to say, well, can you rezone my property because I'd like to, uh, realize some economic advantages of the property?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to bring that up, that I think you guys should, you know, look at the whole Tizen area. Thank you.
Okay, uh, one more question. Is there anything, Mr. Borja, that, uh, if we rezoned it all commercial, what are, they would have to go back to GLUC for, uh, variance, let's say, to do some M1 uses, right?
Or if they wanted to particularly upgrade their zoning to, from commercial to M1, they could go through that process. Um, you know, there's, there's, M1 can do everything that commercial allows, but commercial can't do everything that M1 allows.
Yeah, I'm asking the opposite, right? If we, if we rezoned it commercial, it would restrict it a little more, they'd have to go through the process to go to the, the, the uses that are not covered in commercial, right? Which would be more industrial, yes.
Right, but you already are budding up against an M2, which is the airport, and now...
M2 and a schools.
And schools.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and I believe that in the bill, uh, it does allow that if they don't, if the landowner does not agree with, um, with the M1 zoning... I believe it, it requires that they can also still, so if they want to, if they want to rezone to commercial instead of M1, I believe that option is here. Um, but, but anyway, let me, let me, Senator, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Borja, what, what is the majority of the current zoning for the properties here?
Agriculture.
Agriculture. Um, and I, I don't know if you would know this, but have these, each individual property owners, have they been notified of this bill beforehand, or are we going to notify them after it has been decided?
Not yet, not by us.
Okay.
So the only notification they would have had was the...
Public hearing.
...publication in the paper, uh, on this particular bill.
Okay, thank you, Senator. I just have one more question. Can you please explain some of the reasons why the government would, uh, do a blanket M1 zone in this area? Out of your, from your expertise?
Well, the government is not doing a blanket M1 zone, the legislature's requesting...
I, the sponsor of the bill is the one that's proposing the idea to, uh, do a blanket rezoning of that area up there in, in view of the fact that when the properties were returned, um, it was returned with the intention that it was to be used for industrial and commercial business activities.
The method we would prefer to always use and what I have always testified with is that we would prefer that the process go through the Guam Land Use Commission so that it would receive the full vetting of all the, the review committee and for us to be able to give the notification to the surrounding neighbors that are, that fall within the 500-foot radius so that they, and then there's even an additional public hearing that's held in the community that's affected, in this case, it would be here in this village.
And, uh, and are, that, what is the impact considering the social impacts as far as there's a baseball field there, there's a football field, these are all areas where families go, um, you know, as extracurriculars to, for their child's development or even for their own personal growth? What is the impact there? Do you know?
Well, no, I don't. I mean, it depends on what the, the landowner's desire is to use that land as, if it's zoned as an M1.
Right.
Again, the restrictions, you know, once you grant that kind of zoning, that, then you can't really stop the kinds of uses that they're allowed to have that's, that's, that's permitted within the law.
Hmm, okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, so Mr. Borja, the, uh, Mr. Clifford Guzman has, uh, signed up, he wanted to give some oral testimony, and then, um, for the final, um, uh, testimony, um, Mayor Bloss, uh, I will give you the, um, the opportunity. Okay, Mr. Guzman, yeah, you can come up.
Buenos, and good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Speaker. Uh, it's great to be here tonight. I come in kind of two hats. One is that, uh, you know, my family does have property along, uh, Radio Barigada, part of it is property we've always owned and part of it is property that's been, been returned. And, uh, then on the opposite side of, in Western, um, Tizen, uh, we also have some property over there that my grandfather farmed and that was subsequently returned to us as well. So, uh, I guess I've got two perspectives on this. Uh, let me speak first about, uh, well, let me speak first about the bill. Um, I think it's a good step forward and I want to congratulate you on putting this together. It looks like it's, is fairly thought out and there's some opportunities for, uh, particularly when you give a landowner the opportunity to make a choice on their own, rather than just saying, this is what it is, this is what you got, go pay your taxes and, and move on. So I think that's good. Um, I, I do have some concerns, uh, as was stated earlier, about, um, creating another Harmon, if you will, um, and the fact that we've got a school in there and we've got some recreational facilities and whatnot. And I know that in schools alone, uh, you know, the issue of not serving alcohol, 500 feet, I mean, perhaps that's something that could be considered down the line when, um, and I don't know if it's something that could be put into, into this, uh, legislation to help protect the kids who go there, that's important. Um, but it is a little concerning about putting, um, industrial uses like auto shops and paint booths and things around, around schools. Uh, the other thing is the quiet enjoyment of the village and its surrounding properties. And, um, I'm a firm believer in private property rights. I don't think you can legislate values, and I think you need to be able to allow people to create their own values, but give them guidance through processes like the GLUC. That's what it's set up for, to make sure that the property owner, when they go through the process of trying to rezon something, that they're aware of all of the issues that are out there, be it water power sue or whether it's, you know, environmental or whatever. It helps them to a certain extent make informed decisions about what they're going to do with the property as well. Um, and moreover, uh, like in our, in our case, uh, the property we own up in Tizen or that was deeded back, uh, you know, I'm only one of seven heirs on that and there's, you know, all, um, we're all heirs from our parents, who are the actual heirs. So getting unanimity on anything is tough. We were able to get through the probate, um, and so, but I think all of, uh, my, 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 my cousins, that we all agree that the highest and best use is the, is the most optimal, um, uh, thing for the family, and unfortunately, all of them live off island. So, you know, other than another cousin that I have here. So that issue needs to be dealt with. I do believe with the Tizen Parkway coming through, a lot of that property, and I'm intimately familiar with that, as you know, Senator, uh, that's all been resolved. I think that's, it is what it is. But there's opportunities along that Parkway, once it's open, for people who own property there to make an, make a choice and decide what they want to do with their property. Um, and, um, again, we have a process, it's called the GLUC, we can go through that. Um, I do get nervous when we start legislating zone, zoning, I do, I'll be honest with you. I've seen... I've seen good things come from that and I've seen terrible things come from that. And, um, and quite honestly, Harmon's, Harmon's one of them. With all due respect, um, you know, Harmon, the Harmon Industrial Park, that's a classic example of what can go wrong when you legislate zoning. So, um, but, I think there has to be a deliberative process. This particular area that you're talking about and, and the bill that you're putting, that you're submitting, that you've authored and, and are submitting, uh, for consideration. Again, it's an issue of quiet enjoyment, it's an issue of trying to balance that, that peace and, and commerce. Uh, they don't necessarily always go together, and then you've got the issues of schools, you've got the issues of access. You develop this area and in the event of an issue where you have a chlorine spill or a chemical spill of some sort and you need to get people out of there, how do you do that? How do you, is there going to be, um, legislated into this, um, access and egress? Um, you know, I know that there were some issues, uh, just with the post office alone. I know that, uh, you know, over by, where the, um, liberation was held. For years, they've been trying to get some access through there to make it easy. But it is concerning, um, you know, when school gets out there, you do have issues, and although there are some potential outlets that, that can be realized out of this, then there's a whole traffic studies and there's a lot of stuff that needs to go into that. So, I just hope that you doing this and taking this bill through is gonna, is gonna raise some thought and some, some eyebrows perhaps, uh, so that we can all make informed decisions, including yourselves, when you, when you deliberate this on the floor. I am a big advocate, though, if we're gonna do one part of it and there are other parcels out there that are privately held now, we should try to take a look and see what we can do for all of it, and do it in one fell swoop. And, uh, so, I know, we're not the only family, we've got the Torres's over there, there's the, um, you know, the, um, Pun Salons on our side, and, um, that doesn't necessarily mean we all, we all have unanimity either. Um, so, I would just like to suggest that, that as you go through this and you think about this, that we also think about the other areas that are in private property hands, and see what kind of options you can also give them through this legislation, or subsequent legislation, if that's what it takes. Because, again, this is something, I mean, we're all looking and trying to, uh, improve jobs, this is great for Baragada because it's gonna create jobs for them, but it's also gonna bring, bring in other issues along with it. It's gonna bring in, you know, concerns about everything that's been talked about here, and it's gonna bring in a lot of people from other areas of the island and perhaps off island, and then the current concern is what happens with the quiet enjoyment there. But, um, that's also an issue that Baragada residents have to take on as well, and they have to decide what their values are as a community. But, bottom line is, private property owners need to have private property rights within a reasonable estimation and a reasonable approach that will allow the surrounding community to have quiet enjoyment of what properties they have as well. So, that's, that's my, um, oral testimony, if you will, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that. Oh, and by the way, my name is Clifford Guzman, for the record, I guess I have to do that, right?
Thank you very much. I mean, you raised some very good points, and, uh, I can assure you that the committee will move deliberately with this bill and make sure that, uh, that, you know, the concerns that you've raised, uh, will actually have been addressed. And, and of course, we will be getting a lot of feedback through the mayor's, uh, the municipal planning council, through the mayor. This thing is not gonna be, uh, ready to, to report out, you know, within the next couple of weeks. I think we've still got, uh, some, some, uh, a, a little bit more to go, to kind of make sure we got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
Well, and if I may, Senator, thank you for opening up the dialogue. Now, we just gotta work to keep the dialogue open because there are a lot of people who have, uh, vested interest in the properties in Tizen and the properties surrounding Tizen.
And, and, you know, if in the next couple of weeks, uh, more people indicate an interest to have another public hearing because they have more questions. In fact, after this hearing, uh, Mr. Joe Borha will, will, will be staying behind to answer whatever questions, uh, people may have, uh, about the properties, uh, in that parcel that we're talking about there. Mayor, uh, go ahead, well, I want you to go ahead and give your remarks, and then I'll, I'll open it up to the-
For the record, my name is June Bloss, the mayor of Baragada, and welcome to our wonderful village. Good evening, Senator Telenan Nelson, Senator Ada, and Senator Turlahe. Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee on Environmental Lands, Agriculture, and Procurement Reform, Buenos, dan saludu para todos Hamzu. Vice Mayor Jesse P. Botista and I, together with the members of the Baragada Municipal Planning Council, welcome you and your committee and staff to Baragada. We are pleased to submit our testimony on Bill 13-34, an act to rezon lots in Parcels 1 and 2 to light industrial M1. And for the record, on March 7, 1995, 22 years ago, the Baragada Municipal Planning Council submitted its comments on the Comatea Paratiza and NAS reuse master plan. The members of the committees were, main mayor, the former mayor, Raymond S. Leguano, Vice Mayor Jesse B. Palikan, MPC members Felix C. Beneventi, committee vice chairman, and John Camacho, as well as James Castro. We present an alternative course of action for the KPT to review. We also request that additional public lands to be transferred to Baragada so we can utilize them as parks and sports and recreational facilities. At the time, even file the necessary documents known as the Tizen-Baragada Foundation to serve and provide public benefits, education, recreational services to our residents. This approach was supported by the municipal and the Baragada Mayor's Office to the Municipal Planning Council. Our position was based on the fact that Baragada has proven experience in parks, sports, and recreation facilities, maintenance and arrange, and management. And then this facility, Baragada, has no public parks, recreation, and sports facility in its name. We wanted to further develop the NAS parks and recreational facilities. It is so sad to say that only thing that has occurred in this, in that Baragada has a senior high school. A closer look at the Bill of 13-34 reveals that approximately 250 acres of land, which comprise about 40 different lots contained in Parcels 1 and 2, are to be rezoned from agriculture to light industrial M1. When the federal government returned these properties back to the government of Guam in 2000, it was the express purpose that it would be used for economic development. Now, here we are. Mr. Chairman, normally, the Baragada Municipal Planning Council does not support legislative zoning or rezoning. We have seen legislative zoning can do. While the rezoning goes through the legislative route, we have seen the role of Department of Land Management and other regulating agencies diminish. In this case, we hope that the Department of Land Management will come forward and submit an in-depth report while the same encouraging other departments and the agencies to support their comprehensive assessment so that a thorough and comprehensive land zoning consideration report can be prepared for the benefit of the community members, committee members, and the landowners. If we are to rezon approximately 250 acres of land to the economic purpose, then we should also be looking at alternative routes in and out of Tizen. The Tizen roadway or, or highway system must be improved to accommodate the proposed development of the area. We must explore other possibilities and aim to implementing a connector road system. This suggested rope patterns would involve the full development and utilization of Mariner Avenue. If I'm not mistaken, Mariner Avenue has been deeded back to the government of Guam. When the land zoning consideration report is prepared, when we hope that it is a thorough report, we would like to review the land zoning consideration report. Also, we would like to know if it's a sufficient infrastructure, water, power, sewer. More importantly, there are most infrastructure lines the property of the government of Guam and, or the federal government. And at this time, we would like to see more, a thorough agriculture impact statement prepared and submitted by the Department of Agriculture in part of 61, 637 of the 21 GCA. And it reads, "No lands presently zoned A may be rezoned without a commission first having considered an agricultural impact," statement which shall be submitted by the Director of Department of Agriculture. And the statement shall provide a detailed statement of, A, the agriculture impact of the proposed rezoning upon the agriculture components of the Guam master plan, and B, any adverse conversation or ag- conservation, I'm sorry, or agricultural effects which cannot be avoided be, should be rezoning, be approved. It is our position that there should be a proposed alternative access leading to and from the proposed properties to be rezoned. And at this time, we strongly recommend that since, since the, your committee has jurisdiction over land and the zone changes and lands use permit, permits efforts to made to you, to utilize Mariner Avenue. In closing, let me just state that pursuant to 61638, 21 GCA, the Municipal Planning Council will have had ample time to thoroughly review the proposed zone change and thereupon express our support or opposition to the legislation. And thank you for allowing us this opportunity to comment on Bill 13-34.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bloss, and, uh, certainly your comments will be taken into due consideration.
Yes, Senator, we appreciate, you know, you being here tonight and listening to the stakeholders and the concerns that everyone has. And basically, we are not one to tell you what to do with your properties, but we also need to look at the safety of the area and, and provisions in the law, that we need to make sure that infrastructure. I, I hate to have something where, uh, things are being built and we also have flooding issues. We see it out there, and when properties are zoned through the legislature, they don't really know what happens down here. We see it and we know the people and the areas around us. So, those are the concerns that we need to make sure that we look into, um, before we move on, on, on zoning into M1. Thank you.
Okay. Vice, Vice Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairperson and Mr. Guzman and, and Mayor Bloss. I really appreciate your testimony. Um, I, I, I appreciate your concerns and, and every aspect. I guess my, my question actually would be for, um, the director, but, is he still here? I just wanted, yeah, I wanted to ask him if what you have, um, and I'm sure the committee chair will follow up, but what you have suggested that you would like to see or your municipal planning council would like to see and that we should see, if that is possible.
Well, Senator, let me just, um, let me just ask then, Mr. Borha, maybe if you can put up another chair up here, and if you could join us up here so that, uh-
Oh, he is here. Okay, great, great. Mr. Bor, could you just, could you just clarify one more time? This land zoning consideration report is not the same as if, uh, the report that the GLUC would have before it if it was considering a, a land zoning?
No, they would, you normally get, um, reports from all the members of the application review committee that would be part of the package for the planning staff to summarize and then express what those different, uh, um, opinions are from each-
Is it, is it possible to, um, obtain those, that type of a review for our consideration?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we would need some additional time.
Okay, what about, um, the mayor's concern about an agricultural impact statement? Was that part of the ARC?
Well, that is, that is.
Okay. All right. Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Senator Nelson?
None.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, but I, I do wanna let everybody know that after we, after we adjourn this meeting, uh, we'll stay behind, and if anybody has any questions, any specific questions, uh, Mr. Borha will be, well, hopefully both Borhas will stay behind and, uh, be able to answer your questions here. Okay? Uh, so, uh, we'll, let me get some through this boilerplate stuff here. So, being that there's no further testimonies or questions, the Committee on Land certifies that this public hearing is complete, and it is now 7:30 PM, and so we are now adjourned.